Hello, family. Hello, hello, hello. Sorry, I had the camera the other way, right? So, I'm finishing up my lessons, right? We have so many, so, so many to get in tonight, right? So, hopefully you guys can see me well, right? Yeah, can see me well this, okay. Um, family, I gotta go turn the porch light on. It's so dark over there. Hold tight, family. I'm just waiting for some of you guys to come on in here. We're getting to our seven spiritual laws of success. Hopefully you guys can see that. Hold on, let me turn the porch light on. Because I can't have the porch light on and I don't think it's gonna be that good. Okay? Okay, family. Hey, Sha. Hey, 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 hey. We got a good one tonight, right? Um, okay. Sha, that was a lot. I've been doing all my, I was just finishing up my last one when I was texting um, on the thing today. So, I wrote out all the, hey, hey, guys. Hey there, my beautiful sisters. All right. So, tonight, we are going to not pull cards. We're gonna talk about some of these, um, spirit, seven spiritual laws of success, okay? So, if you don't have this book, I suggest you get it. If you will, you can probably read it online. You know how they have those like audible books or whatever? I have the little small version of it. I think on Amazon, this one may have been about maybe seven or eight bucks. I didn't get the big book because it's not big at all. It's very thin, you know what I'm saying? Because it's pretty much, he incorporates the universal laws, but in a spiritual spin of things to be successful, right? And I just love the way he put it right in this book. Um, so, it's, uh, this is how it looks. You could screenshot it, have it in your little, um, you know, books to, uh, read, you know, on maybe your vacation or something like that. It may not even take you that long. It didn't take me maybe a hour to read this whole book, but I love to read too. And it's not that big, like I said. It only costs maybe seven or eight bucks, and this is the small version, right? And so, this book is by Deepak Chopra. And it's the pocket version one, but it's the real, it's the same book that, that other people have. It's just the pocket version, right? Because I like to, I, I, you know, take stuff with me, with me in my purse and stuff like that so I can, you know, show people or whatever. Okay. So, we're not gonna read through the book, but I'mma go over some of the, the, the aspects of what we, um, what I got out of this book, right? And why I want you guys to read it for yourself too. Um, and if we have time, then I may pull a card or two. I don't know. But, um, oh, and I hope you guys, if you, um, if you celebrate Valentine's Day, you have a great Valentine's, or that's why I don't wanna take too much of you guys' time because I know some of you have, you know, uh, others to get with and so forth in reference of your Valentine's, right? So, today I did take myself out for Valentine's. Okay, I'll start with that, chit chat with you guys first. Um, I went to go see the Bob Marley movie and it was really good. Uh, I, I mean, I'm gonna, I'm not gonna say it was really, it was really good because I loved the music, right? But in reference of the actual movie, I feel like they could have maybe did it more where they showed, showed his childhood. Um, they kinda like flashed it back to his childhood, you know what I'm saying? But other than that, I mean, it was pretty good, you know what I mean? Like, I told my son, my son said, "Oh, yeah, well, I ain't going to go see it, ma." Because he was like, "If you didn't say it was like excitingly good, I'm not gonna go see it." I was like, "Yeah." I said, "I mean, you know, I could tell that they left a lot out." You know what I'm saying? They left a lot out. I mean, he was only thirty-six when he died, so, um, yeah. But other than that, I mean, it was very long. It's like almost two hours. So, I tried to sneak away on my break today with work and I got back really late because I had to go and get me some food and do, you know, a couple of other things. And then I started with my lessons. So, it's been a real, I had a really good day today though. So, I hope you guys did too. Um, but back to this book, right? And why I like this book? Because it basically includes the, um, universal laws, right? And so, y'all know I love the universal laws, right? And the reason why I love them? Because we're governed by those, right? We're governed by the universal laws. So, it is something that we are to, and even in Ms. T's teaching, right? She puts that in there as well, which I think is wonderful. Um, but these are some that can help us in reference of spiritually, with spiritual success, okay? So, this is kinda like pulling out the main ones to help you spiritually on your journey, basically, okay? So, we'll go over the first one. The first one is the law of pure potentiality. Now, when I first started reading the book, I don't really care for the word potential, right? Remember, I talked about that. It's kinda like the word luck to me, right? But then, when I started reading into what he was stating, he kinda put a spin on it, right? So, I really think he should have said the law of pure consciousness. That's what he should have called this one, which is what the pure potentiality is to him, um, that wrote the book. Basically, it's the law of all possibilities and infinite creativity, right? So, it's pure consciousness. Um, stillness is the first requirement for manifesting your desires, okay? And in this law, he speaks about taking time each day to just be silent. Um, just connect with spirit and just be, which I feel that because that's basically the first law that he puts in this book is for you to be silent and that goes along with meditation. Because we all know that's the main thing in reference of tapping in, right? You have to meditate on your spiritual journey. There's no other way, right? And so, he starts with that. He says, "Practice non-judgment, um, commune with nature, um, and understand that pure consciousness is awareness, which awareness is spirituality, right? When you're aware, um, you're able to be conscious enough to understand the truth, right? No longer living in what they consider or call the matrix, right? And so, these spiritual laws of success, family, go along with you actually reflecting on yourself, on your spiritual journey and asking yourself, can you embrace these things to be actually successful on your spiritual journey? So, not only, you know, do you tap in with your shadow, but you also need to tap in with your higher self when you're doing shadow work as well. Let's not forget, we're gonna cover all the five aspects of the soul and I'mma talk more about that in the shadow work class, all right? But this is one of those things where we're tapping in with our higher self to see what to actually utilize our tools, which is what? Books sometimes, right? Not all books are bad, right? Um, things that we experience in life, right? Um, because life experience is the best teacher, right? Mm-hmm. And so, that's what we're getting here with this pure potentiality. Now, most of us understand this, especially those who have been on our spiritual journey for a while now. Um, we know, or we are conscious of meditating. We are conscious of, you know, silence in reference of, um, connecting with spirit and just being, right? And we know, it says, "One hour of wisdom" is what he also advised in reference of the purpose of one hour of wisdom, right? To nurture our spirit, to be reminded of the power of life flowing through all of us, right? So, think about if you just give yourself one hour a day to really nurture yourself, to really speak to thyself, to really silence thyself. If you can't get an hour, which I know is pretty hard for a lot of us, but if you can get some time to yourself, right? That's the main objective at hand, family, right? So, he definitely talks of that at the beginning of the book, right? Of one hour, one idea, one act of love can make a difference, right? Where you tapping into self. It's about yourself. It's about your life force. It's about what your power is. Do you know your power? Do you understand that the first law of success, spiritual success, is pure potentiality, which would be pure consciousness? And if you think about it, that's accurate because pure consciousness is bringing unity consciousness as well, right? Where you want, or you're able to be aware that it's all about uniting us. It's all about love at the end of the day. And it's all about self first because you gotta get yourself first where you can help others, right? So, give yourself that time and understand that there's all possibilities in everything, right? Regardless if you can't see it, that's faith, right? So, that's the first spiritual, uh, law of success, okay? Um, and he just talks about that in depth in this chapter, right? And I'll let you guys go through it, um, in the book. But he definitely talks about, you know, it's, um, our physical body, our physical universe, everything in the material world comes from the same place, a field of silence, unmoving awareness, from which anything is possible, right? But if you think about it, that goes back to the first universal law. All is mental. Everything is mental, right? So, anything is possible if everything is mental, right? So, it goes back to that self-consciousness, right? The essence of self. And that is the first, um, spiritual law that he puts here. So, I'll let you guys go into detail on that one, okay? But it definitely is about you doing those three things to experience the law of pure potentiality is to take time each day to be silent, connect with your spirit, practice non-judgment each day. Um, you may wanna, you know, have this statement. It says, "Today I shall judge nothing that occurs." Throughout the day, remind yourself that statement each time you catch yourself judging. Some of us need to do that, right? And commune with nature. Silently observe the intelligence within everything. Watch a sunset. Listen to the sound of the ocean. Simply smell the flowers. That's what I did today. My son gave me some flowers. He gave me some, um, flowers and, um, some strawberry-covered, uh, chocolate strawberry-covered strawberries. And I'm getting ready to eat some of them. And he, that was the worst thing to do because, see, I love sweets. So, now those, I'm gonna have to really be fasting next week. Potentially, we're gonna be on it next week because he done got me that. Then I had the food, then I ate some. I just been eating all kinds of stuff, y'all. So, yes, okay? I'm gonna have to tap into that today, okay? But, um, but yes, family. So, okay, so let's move into the second law. Um, spiritual law of success is the law of giving and receiving. Right, we definitely going fast. And I'mma, I'mma, I'mma look at the dates. I hadn't, um, looked at the dates yet, but I'm definitely gonna do that. I've just been running around all day, sis, but I'mma definitely text you back about that. Okay, so the second law of giving and receiving. Everything in the universe operates through dynamic exchange, the flow of energy. That's why, right? Because you've been eating too. Okay, we go, we on it. Don't worry, sis, we on it, okay? We're gonna get ourselves together. Because I just told my girlfriend, uh, yesterday. I said, "I wanna lose at least ten pounds. I've been just eating, eating, eating." And so, next week, we on it, okay? So, family, the second law, um, of spiritual success is the law of giving and receiving. This is, goes back to what we always talk about, about paying it forward and how Ms. T always talks about that as well. But not only that, um, what we need to know about the giving and receiving is everything in the universe is a dynamic exchange, okay? Um, it's the flow of energy, right? You give a gift, even with, with every exchange is what he talks about in this law, which I love this way of looking at it. Now, you think to yourself, and some people who aren't on a spiritual journey are gonna look at this and be like, "I can't give nothing every time I meet somebody, da-da-da-da." But what he says is about that. Every time you encounter someone, give them a gift, right? That's a compliment. Doesn't have to be money. See, that's the, that's the, that's the mentality of some people, right? Give them a compliment, a flower, pray for them silently, you know? A smile, that's giving something, right? Something that shows in reference of the dynamic of energy exchange. Remember, family, everything you put out is what you get back. If you want others to smile at you and be nice to you, then you need to put that out. If you want people to compliment you, sometimes you compliment them, right? I love it too, Chrissy, right? Yeah. And this whole flow of energy, family, is the same with money, right? What you put out is what you get back. So, think of that when you coming amongst people because people are in your energy, family. So, you wanna give that same energy and in the second law of success is giving and receiving. It's based on the fact that everything in the universe is operating on a dynamic energy. Dynamic means automatic, okay? We use dynamic in engineering a lot. Like, when we set up dynamic subnets or networks, they work automatically on their own to give out certain things. That's how you should think of energy exchange, right? And so, every relationship is, is one of give and take, family. So, giving and receiving are different aspects of flow of energy in this universe. If you think about that in a whole, then it'll kinda shift how you think about what you're giving and receiving. And it kinda will shift your mentality of why you feel you should be giving something or why you feel you should receive something, right? Because have you been doing that externally, right? So, just think about this. These are successful tools to use in reference of our spiritual walk, our higher self. We're tapping into the higher self now because we get tired of, you know, always talking about the shadow, shadow, shadow. Yes, we're gonna work on the shadow till the end of time, but we also gotta balance all of them, family. We gotta balance the higher, we gotta balance the shadow, we gotta balance the divine feminine, divine masculine, and that inner child. We didn't forget, right? This is shadow work session, so we touch on all aspects of our what soul, okay? So, the currency, our word for money derives from the Latin word that means to run or flow. So, money is a symbol of life energy we give and the life energy we receive as a result of service we provide to others. Like a river, money must keep flowing, otherwise it begins to clog and stagnate. So, the circulation keeps it alive and vital. That's why they say you gotta spend money to get money. You see? That's where that saying came from. You have to put it out to get it back, right? Because if you ho, 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 holding on your money, now, I'm not saying go and spend it all, right? Keep some, but you gotta give to receive, right? It's just the universal law. Your intention behind the giving. Here we go, bingo. Here's the key. The intention behind our giving and receiving is the most important thing in this law, okay? That's something you need to know, right? And when the act of giving is joyful and from the heart, family, it is unconditional, then the energy behind the giving increases many times over. And when you think of that, it does what? If there's, if we give un, it says, "If we give grudgingly, there's no energy behind that giving." I love that. If we feel we have lost something through the act of giving, then the gift is not truly given and will not cause increase, see? So, the law of giving and receiving is simple, family. If you want love, then learn to give love. If you want attention and appreciation, learn to give appreciation and attention. If you want material influence, help others to become material influence. If you want to be blessed with all the goods things in life, learn to silently bless everyone with all good things in life. The more you give, the more you will receive. That is the key, okay? So, I feel this one was a huge one for us to understand to, to, if you get this book, it gives like questions, you know? The way to experience the law of giving and receiving is to give a gift to everyone you come in contact with. This doesn't have to be in the form of material things. Gifts of caring, affection, appreciation, and love are some of the most precious gifts that don't cost for any money. Hey, AJ, right? And so, you have to think outside the box. Don't always put something towards giving in reference of monetary. Think about outside of that because it comes from the heart, family, when you do more things in reference of just being loving, right? Because you're gonna get that love back. But if you selfish, right? And if you sitting in that shadow all the time in reference of trying to receive something, it's not, it's not, family. It's gonna make your, your receiving and your, 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 um, your abundance be stagnant, okay? So, um, just think of those things in reference of giving and receiving that don't cost a thing. A flower, a compliment, a prayer, um, just showing somebody love, picking up the phone and calling them. These are all things about giving, giving your time. Go help somebody who, who can't help themselves, right? Give them something you probably got laying around the house that you don't even use. That's still, it's about the intent, right? And God sees all of that, right? So, that's the second law, right? Y'all know I can go on and on and on about the giving and receiving. I love that. That's why I love to be generous too. Because when you do that, family, you know, you give to everyone you encounter is the main thing about experiencing law of giving and receiving. I want you guys to think about that too, you know? This will begin the process of circulating joy and influence in your life, in the lives of others. Gracefully receive every gift that life offers you. Be open to receiving as well, okay? Whether it be a material gift from others or a compliment or a prayer. That's another thing. Remember that. When people say they're gonna pray for you or give you a compliment or something like that, that's your receiving as well. Receive that. Be open to receiving that and be of gratitude, right? Yeah, or watch video, liking video, okay? Um, and silently, this is the third thing it says about you experiencing the law of giving and receiving. It says, "And silently wish everyone you encounter happiness, joy, and laughter. By giving and receiving the gifts of caring, the affection, appreciation, and the love will keep wealth circulating in your life." But when you decide in your mind, because ancestors and the Most High can even look at your thoughts too. So, remember that. So, when you feel envious and jealousy and all these things of that sort or when you have some type of, um, energy of competing, don't, right? There's no need, right? Everybody can have it all, right? Because that's what we, our birthright is to be abundant, right? So, think of it like that and then you'll never fail with the whole thing of encountering others and giving them love too, right? Yeah. So, let's move into the third spiritual law for excess, success, the law of karma. My babe, y'all know I love this. Or cause and effect, which would be what aries for us on the, on the, on the ladder or in the astrology zodiac. But in this, this is just a way for us to take these seven spiritual laws of success and use it for the better, for the greater good, for our higher self. But I wanna read this to you. Karma is the external assertion of human freedom. Our thoughts, our words, and deeds are threads of the net which we throw around ourselves, see? The third spiritual law, family, is the law of karma. Action and the consequence of that action, okay? That's what it is. Action and the consequence of that action. Now, everyone has heard the expression, "You reap what you sow," right? So, if you want to create happiness in our lives, we must learn to sow the seeds of happiness, okay? And we need to do that with what? Good intent, which I talk about this all the time, family. Y'all already know how this karma thing works. We don't have to go too much in detail. Just understand that it implies the action of the conscious choice-making. You are conscious, free will, right? Brings that around. The best way to use the karmic law is to step back and witness the choices you are making in every moment. Really sit back and look at the choices you're making and be aware, right? Be conscious of the, the things that you're choosing to do. That way, you won't make bad decisions and you won't reap karma, right? When you make any choices, ask yourself two things. What are the consequences of this choice? That's the first question you should ask yourself, right? What are the consequences of this choice? This will help you make better choices, family. I hope you guys are paying attention and listening because these are important. The second is, will the choice I'm making bring happiness to me and to those around me? Will this choice I'm making bring happiness to me and to those around me? Because that's also what you wanna definitely be able to do. You wanna make happiness, hey, sis? I wanna make happiness for not only for you, but for others, right? Because that's also being conscious of not only yourself, but others around you, your family, your friends, the collective, right? So, there is always one choice that will create maximum happiness for both you and those around you, okay? But the choice is spontaneous, right? Action because it's the action that nourishes you and everyone else who is influenced by that action, see? So, you have to think hard and long sometimes about how to make these choices around karma, family, okay? The questions when making a choice is what karma is flowing into, okay, in your life. And I'mma let you guys read that, but I will tell you what it says about to experience the law of karma. Witness the choices you make in every moment. That's the first thing. So, some of you that, like me, when I, before I even got into this book, I wasn't paying attention to the choices I made. I was just making choices, whatever I feel like making, that's what I was doing. Well, that put me in a lot of situations that wind up costing me some, some, some regret, um, some karma, good and bad, right? But that's because I wasn't aware and I, and I didn't understand to sit back sometimes and witness things, right? Witness the choices you make in every moment. And the best way to prepare for any moment in the future is to be fully conscious in the present. Do you understand? Be aware, be fully conscious in the present. Whenever you have to make a decision, this is what that means. Sit back and think about it first, family. Make a conscious decision, right? It will save you. I'm telling you it will. Because I'm telling you from life experience, it will, okay? Whenever you make a choice, ask yourself these two questions. What are the consequences of this choice? And will this choice bring happiness to me and those who are affected by this choice? Now, I also put a spin on that because these are the things that he states to do in his book. But the spin I put on it is, also ask your ancestors. But the spin I put on it is, also ask your ancestors. Is this a choice that I should be making in reference of, it's, you know, going this way or going that way, ancestors? And stand strong in what the ancestors show you, whether that's through divination, whether that's through just tapping in with your ancestors and going to your ancestors altar, right? Whatever way the ancestors bring it to you. And the questions here that he's given us to ask and the ways to look at it before going and making that decision, especially if it's a deep, deep, deep decision that's gonna affect something in your life harshly. Family, I beg of you. Wait, ask your heart for guidance and be guided by its message of comfort and dis- discomfort. Which means ask the most high in your ancestors first, right? Before making a move, right? Ask your spirit, ask spirit, ask your ancestors. If the choice feels uncomfortable, then, then don't make that choice. Cause I'm telling you, it will save you. It'll save you. So, let's move on to the number four. Number fours of the seven spiritual laws of success, family. Is the law of the least effect or effort. The law of the least effort. E F F O R T. Effort, like I put effort into something, right? But the law is of least effort. And what he talks about in this is, do less and accomplish more. You heard what I said? Do less and accomplish more. Don't we all want that, right? To do less and accomplish more, family. We are, listen, I wrote it on my, I got a, uh, index card here with all the notes out of this book, right? Cause I told you guys I read the book and prior and, um, and I wanted to pull the key points out for you guys. But listen to this, do less and accomplish more. We all want that, right? So this law is the fourth law is spiritual success, family. Right? So, you know, what better way than to buy this book to just to learn that, right? Yeah, so, let's listen, listen to this, right? An integral being knows without going, sees without looking and accomplishes without doing. Wow, right? That's amazing to even think about. So, with that being said, based on the fact of the law of least effort is that nature's intelligence functions without, with effortless ease and carefreeness harmony and love. Right? To do less and accomplish more. When we learn this lesson from nature, we easily fulfill our desires, okay? If we observe nature at work, we see that the eff- the least effort is expended. Grass, listen to this, grass doesn't try to grow, it just grows. Okay? Fish doesn't try to swim, they just swim. This is their in- intrinsic nature. It is the nature of the sun to shine. It is the human nature to make our dreams manifest into the physical form easily and effortlessly. What is commonly called a miracle is actually an expression of the law of, of law, the law of least effort. The least effort is expended with our actions are motivated by love because nature is held together by the energy of love, family. When we seek power and control over others, people, we spend energy in a wasteful way. When we seek money for personal gain only, we cut off the flow of energy to ourselves and interfere with the expression of nature's intelligence. We waste our energy chasing the illusion of happiness instead of enjoying happiness in the moment. The attention to the whims of the ego consumes the greater, the greatest amount of energy. Right? So our energy multiplies, the surplus energy we gather can be channeled to create anything we want, including unlimited wealth. We, when we harness the energy of harmony and love, we use our energy creatively for the experience of influence and evolution, okay? So, the third way to put the law of, uh, least effort in, family. I'm sorry, the second way is to take responsibility for your situation and for all the events you see as problems. This means not blaming anyone or anything for your situation, including yourself. Responsibility means the ability to have a creative response to the situation as it is now. So the third way into this is action to practice defensivelessness. This means relinquish the need to convince others of your viewpoint. By doing this, you gain the access to the abnormal, the enormous amounts of energy, okay? So, he gives you three different ways. It's, in the first way, accept people's circumstances and events as they are in this moment. So when confronted with a challenge, remind yourselves, okay? This moment is as it should be. This is what we should be telling ourselves and our higher self to conquer any challenge. We should stop. Meditate. And we should say, this moment is as it should be, because it is. Because what? Everything happens for a reason, right? So when we think like that, it is because the entire universe is as it should be. We can't change it. When it's happening, it is. We have to sit in that moment, right? The second thing he says is take responsibility for the situation without blaming anyone or anything, including yourself. See, that's the key. Don't blame yourself. Don't blame others. It's what it's supposed to be, right? So every problem is the opportunity, see? When you start thinking like that and you change that perception in your mind that every problem has a solution and every problem is an opportunity, family. That will transform into benefits. That will transform for the greater benefit, the greater good, right? Not only for you but those around you, because they're gonna start seeing that change in the way you speak and the way you think. And that's gonna rub off on others. That's how you make a change, right? Small, but forcefully. The last thing he says is relinquish the need to defend your point of view. In defensivelessness, you remain open to all points of view, not rigidly attached to one of them. So, being open to all points of view, the bigger picture, look at the bigger picture. Stand outside of the situation, learn how to do that, family, right? Yes, it starts with you, right? That's correct, sis. I love that. Yes, okay? So, that is the law to the least, um, effort. Do less and accomplish more, okay? And that happens by what? Allowing things to happen, miracles, because that's what's standard in your faith. Once again, you see how faith comes around just about in everything spiritual? That's because that's the number one thing. That's what God sees. Remember, I told you guys on Key and T, luck is not no such thing. Coincidences is not no such thing, family. It's faith. It's faith, okay? So, the fifth law, the law of intention and desire. Now, we talk about this a lot, right? Intention and desire, right? We talk about this. We, we talk about organizing, we talk about setting our intent. We talk about what we're gonna do. We talk about our desires. We talk about our goals. We go on and on and on and on about this, but not even realizing that it's one of the spiritual laws for success. To set your intent, right? Some of us know that, right? But not a lot of us don't, because you don't understand how important it is to do it. And not just on moon phases either, right? It's important to do it every day to start your day, right? My intent is to get up and have a good day, no matter what comes my way. That is one, that is the first intent of the day you should be saying when you put, before you s- put your feet on the ground, you know? You should be saying that, because that shifts that energy immediately, right? It shifts the energy and it shifts you, how you feel, right? Alright, so the fifth spiritual law of success, the law of intention says that our intentions and desires, when released into the field of pure potential- potentiality, have infinite organizing power. Basically, it, it gives us power, okay? Right? So introducing the intention, um, in the fertile ground of yourself activates a field of infinite organization within you that works for you, right? It isn't mystical, right? Every time we have a desire to walk or lift our arms or our intentions incites millions of chemical reactions and electrical impulses that obey the fixed laws of nature. So not only you saying it into the ethers, but it's something that is chemically within your mind and in your body that when it hears that this is my intent, it's like sources antennas go up. As source says, my child has said, this is the intent and this shall be, right? My ancestors say, and this shall be, right? So, think of it like that. Remember, we always say, and I, I learned this from one of the priestess that I used to listen to. She said, speak from your hecka, that speaking from your voice, what you put out into the ethers is definitely heard. Not only by the physical, by the, by the spiritual, right? The spiritual realm. So you wanna say this, family. You wanna set your intentions, not only by paper but out of your mouth. That also assists that throat chakra, right? It's other ways of doing things, family, right? The fifth spiritual law says that inherit is, it says that inherit in every desire are the mechanics, mech- mechanics for its fulfillment. And these mechanics apply to desires reaching far beyond the physical body. Yes, you hear that? So your desires and your goals, your thoughts, your dreams, all of that. You think your ancestors don't know that? You think source don't know that? But it's about you speaking it into existence and putting action behind your intentions, right? Yeah, pure consciousness, family. There's nothing other than energy. It's nothing other than energy, okay? It's nothing other than energy. Okay? Um, let's see here. I like what he said here. We can consciously change the energy and the information of our own body and influence the energy and the information of our extended body, our environment and cause things to manifest in it. I say, you don't know your power. If you think like that, know your power. When something go wrong, like, call your ancestors up. If you've been working with your ancestors like I worked with my ancestors, if you've been making that spiritual connection as you should, right? You can just speak and your ancestors will show right up, right? Help you shift that, that energy, help you set that intent into play in the physical. Because on the spiritual, you already got protection. You already got that, that guidance, right? So why ask for it and not use it? Yeah, intention. Intention, be conscious of it, family, right? It can transform things. Okay, so, we're gonna go through to the end of this one and he says, to experience the law of intention and its desires. You, we all know this one. Make a list of your intentions and desires. Look at the list before you go into your silence or your meditation, before you go to sleep at night, when you wake up. Whatever, like me, stick your sticky notes, you know, reminds me of that old show. And I used to love that show. I don't know why they took it off, but Mary Jane, right? I used to love that show, right? She stuck her sticky notes, her affirmations on her mirror. You know what I mean? And it had me laughing because I know they had to get that from somebody spiritual, because I do it all the time, right? I got sticky notes on my desk at work. I mean, you know what I mean, in my office and. Yeah, because you wanna, you wanna see it, you wanna speak it, you wanna envision it, right? Yeah, Mary Jane was a bomb, right? The second way, family, is release your desires to the field of self, trusting it, it to handle all details for you. Know, know that when things don't seem to go your way, there is a reason. Yes, okay? Speaking, releasing those desires and those intentions into the ethers, okay? Practice present moment awareness in all your actions. That's the key. That's the key. A lot of us don't live in the present moment. We live in the past or in the future. We trying to hear it but get somewhere, or either we thinking about what we used to have, but what about right now? What about right now? Refuse to allow obstacles to consume your attention in the present moment. That's what we need to do, family. Refuse. I refuse, ancestors. I refuse to the most high to allow all the obstacles, any obstacles, anything that come my way in the present moment to be. I ask you to remove it. These are the things that you should say. Yeah, live in the now, right? Live in the now, in the present. Alright, six. The, um, the sixth spiritual law of success, okay? This one is a big one. This one is one that I'm learning to do now. The law of detachment. And I made a, a shadow work video on this, remember? The law of detachment, family, okay? The law of detachment. The way to acquire anything in the universe, family, is to relinquish uh, relinquish over attachment and let it go. And that's also attachment to the outcome, alright? Okay, so the sixth spiritual law of success, family, the law of detachment says that the way to acquire anything in this universe is to relinquish our attachment. I wanna say it again. Relinquish our attachment to it, anything. This doesn't mean we give up the intention to create our desires. We don't give up the intention. We don't give up the desire. We don't give up our goals. We don't give up anything except for the attachment to the outcome. Listen to that again. You don't give up what your goals are. You don't give up your desires. You don't give up what you wanna manifest. You give up the outcome. It's just like a ritual. What do you do? You do that and you go on because you already know it's, it's gonna happen. You already know, so mote it be, it shall happen. I'm doing with intent. What I'm not gonna be attached to is the outcome, right? Because I already know it's to come, right? But when you attach to the outcome, I gotta see it coming. I gotta have it coming. No. Because then it's not gonna come, right? So you have to detach, as well as with anything else in, in the energy of holding on to something. Because when you hold on to something, family, you aren't able to receive, okay? The moment we combine one pointed intentions with detachment to the outcome, we will have that which we would design. Anything we want, we can be acquired through detachment. Because detachment is based on the unquestioning belief in the power of self. Wow, when I le- when I read that and learned that, I told my best friend I was gonna become a minim- minimum bliss. I wanted to get rid of everything. I want everything to go. Anybody can have anything I got, because I know I can get something else. And it's gonna be better. Because I'm learning to detach. At one point in time, honey, as the old people that are hoarders. You know why they are hoarders? Like my mom was and my grandma was, right? And all my aunts wanting to hold on to everything, got sheds and storages of stuff that they just can't let go of. Right? Because they don't live by the law of detachment, right? By the law of detachment. And so, they wonder why it's so hard for them to receive. Because God said, you holding on. You holding on, see? So as spiritualists, we have to understand that detachment has to happen. The source of wealth or of anything in the physical world is self. I'm gonna repeat that. The source of wealth or of anything in the physical world is self. The field of pure potentiality that knows how to manifest everything is you. Just like you got it the first time, you can get it again and again and again. You know why? Cause you already are abundant. Cause you already are abundant. That's your birthright, right? The most high your ancestors will never let you go without. But you'll never think like that if you feel like you gotta hold on to everything. Cause you afraid. That's the lack mentality, that's sarcity. Some of us is greed, some of us is ego, right? Yeah, detachment comes from an inner knowingness. That we are patterns of behavior of the higher intelligence, the higher consciousness, right? When things don't seem to go our way, we can't, we can let go of our idea of how things should be. We know in our limited awareness, we cannot see synchronistic harmonious patterns of the universe in which we. And our intentions are part of. Attachment, on the other hand, implies doubt. See that? And distrust in nature's intelligence, in its infinite organizing power, okay? So attachment is the, the melodrama of the ego. Because it's based on fear and insecurity. Yes, it is. And this comes from not realizing the power of self. See, this, this book is so deep, yo. I mean, and it will save your life. I'm telling you guys, when you start shifting your, your mentality, you don't care about things because it's about self, right? And it's hard to change this perception. It is. But if you try. You set intent every day to try one of these universal spiritual laws for success. You can be nothing but successful. In the eyes of who? The most high. Cause this is spiritual success. This is not about anything else, family. And what is that for? You, right? That's why we doing it in the list, in talking about it in shadow work sessions, right? So when I have a million, the people say, when I have a million dollars, then I will be financially independent, then I'll be secure. But it never happens. Attachment to money and security only creates insecurity, no matter how much money we have in the bank. Attachment to the symbols of wealth, cars, houses, banknotes creates anxiety because the symbols are trans uh sority. They come and they go. When we exchange ourself for the symbols of ourself, we end up feeling empty inside. Wow. The search for security is actually an attachment to certainty, to the known. And the known is the prison of our past conditioning. Hmm, I love this book. Wow, wow, wow. Freedom from our past lies in the wisdom of uncertainty, family. That's why uncertainty feels so uncomfortable for a lot of us. And we talk about this all the time. But I'm learning to understand that uncertainty is attached to faith. That's why it's so uncomfortable. Even for me, right? But I'm learning to let go. Without uncertainty, life is just repet- repet- repetitive um of outworn memories. There is no evolution in that. And when there is no evolution, there is stagnancy and decay. Wow. Okay, so yeah, so family, read that one, right? And the outside of that, the last he says, to experience the law of detachment, practice detached involvement. Stay alert to the opportunities within every problem by letting go of the idea how things should be. Accept uncertainty as an essential part of your experience. In your willing, willingness to accept uncertainty, solutions will spontan- spontaneously appear. That's the part that is faith, see? But when you step into the uncertainty with no longer fear in it. That's when things and those miracles and those things start occurring. And then you're wondering, damn, right? All this time, I have fear of the uncertainty. Remain open to all possibilities and enjoy every moment in your, in your journey of your life, okay? Um, and so the last but not least, the seventh law of spiritual laws of success, family. Is the law of Dharma or the purpose in life, the purpose in life. And what is that you wanted to know? Well, the purpose in life. Is that we spiritual beings who take in physical form to fulfill this purpose. So unique gift on spiritual talent to give to others. And true self talent service or serve our fellow human beings with our talents, okay? So this is the purpose in your life, to be your true self, to be authentic to you, right? To you, your true self, knowing all those fa- five aspects that I just told you about at the beginning. And being able to balance those and come within alignment of yourself, right? The five aspects of your soul, the divine masculine, the divine feminine, your higher self, your, your shadow self and your inner child. Once you have all those balanced, that's your true self, right? That's your purpose in life, your talent, that's your skills, your, your gifts, your spiritual gifts and your talents, right? What is your God given spirit and talent, right? Your gifts. And to use those gifts, right? To serve your fellow human beings here on earth. That is your life purpose. And that, family, in a nutshell, is pretty much what the seventh purpose in life. Law of Dharma is in the laws of spiritual success. He says that we as spiritual beings who have taken physical form to fulfill a purpose, we have. And if you are a spiritual being and you call yourself a spiritual being, then you should know this as being your purpose, okay? This is the goal of all goals of everybody, the experience of our spirituality. This sparks that genera- generates our abundance. It's permanent, it's not temporary, okay? This is something that'll go with you, something that'll help you complete this carnation. So you won't have to reincarnate back to, to get done with this purpose in life. If you understand and be able to accomplish your true self. Utilize and be aware of your spiritual gifts, your talents, your skills. And use them for the highest good to help humanity, yes, right? To help your fellow human beings, the spiritual beings as well, to help each one, teach one, to help one, to go further, right? That is your life's purpose, all in all, right? Yeah. And so, Dharma is the sadtric word, which basically means to uphold, right? Because you want to uphold your purpose in life, right? So to experience Dharma, to uphold your purpose in life, is to nurture the divinity within you. The spirit animating your body and your mind by carrying the consciousness of timeless being. In the midst of a time bound experience. My god, that is like a force, those words. If you really, really resonate with that, right? It is to nurture the divinity within you, right? And that's what we do as spiritual beings, when we use our spiritual gifts, in whatever way you wanna use it in divination, right? Yes. To make a list of your unique talents. What are your skills? What are your gifts? Then list all the things you can do, that you do, that you love while expressing these skills and talents. Ask yourself daily, how can I help? How can I serve? The answer to these questions will help you serve your fellow human beings with love. And that, family, is how you conquer your life's purpose, okay? So, and, and in these words, it says, manifest the divinity, divinity within you and everything will be harmlessly arranged around it. I love that so much. I love that, I love that, I love that. Family. That concludes us going through and tapping in with each one of the seven spiritual laws of success. By Deepak Chokha, right? And knowing how to utilize them for our higher selves, yes. I recall Dharma from verdict, yes, to uphold found in your ninth house. I say, look at the verdict, right? The verdict is what it is. Yes, it is, yes. And so, the main thing that stuck out for me, family, was the, the law of detachment. I just love that, right? I love all of these spiritual laws. But the law of detachment, the freedom lies in the wisdom of the uncertainty, even from your past, right? So we gotta carry that with us. Every problem is a seed of opportunity. These are some of the quotes in this book, family, that are just profound. Some of these I keep on my, um, you know, like up, right? So you can remind yourself of these things, right? But it's a lot in this book for you guys to actually go through, keep with you, to be reminded. Sometimes you have to go back and reread it like me, take notes, put yours, some quotes of them, you know, on, on little, you know, things. To stick them around, keep them with you, right? But these are things, these are our tools, right? These are our tools, family, right? Yeah, so that concludes Shadow Work Session. I'm not gonna pull any cards. But I feel like that was just so much, but yes, this was some very good information. I need to order that book, yes. The book is amazing. I recommend it to everyone here, you know? All in the spiritual family, because none of them, I mean, it all goes back to the universal laws, but he spins it, but he puts a spiritual spin on it. And all of it is accurate, all of it, our spiritual teacher done told us, right? Uh plenty of times, just in a different way, I say this, right? Yes. And it's definitely about love, all in all, and loving thyself, right? And loving others, our fellow human beings. But also, you know, um telling us how to maneuver and you giving us tips on how to move. And what to change and how we can actually get these things, right? Um, not only by tapping into, you know, our spiritual gifts, but some of these things, some people don't wanna tap into energy. Well, these are some things you can use, right? Yeah, you can still accomplish not even having to reincarnate, but in other ways. It's all about the greater good. It's all about tapping into your higher self. This lesson is in reference to learning Kazzaya. That's what I always say, right? Yeah, yeah, I thought so too, sis. I thought so too, right? Yeah, so I hope you guys enjoyed it as much as I did with that book. Like I said, y'all get that book, keep that book, you know, go back to it like I do, you know, I read it a few times. Um, yeah, it, it is an audit, yes, it's an audio book. You can get it, the audio, you can get the paperback, yeah. What, whatever way you gotta get it, get it, okay? And make, and like I said, get your quotes out of it, cause I have plenty of his quotes, even on my um bathroom, you know? Um, you know, mirror and stuff, because some of those quotes are like amazing to just remind yourself, right? Cause it's about changing the perception, right, of your mind. And sometimes we have to be reminded, cause not every day is a good day. Not every day we're gonna remember. I'm getting old. I can't remember everything, right? So, family, I love you guys through the darkness to the light, right? And you guys enjoy the rest of your love day and love on yourself every day and others, right? Not just on this made up holiday, okay? I love you guys to life. Till the next time here on Sa- Shadow Work Sessions. I'll see you guys next week. Well, I'll see you guys tomorrow on Thursday night, insight, alright? I love you. Bye.